Good morning, everyone. Just a reminder, we're going to get started here. If you can silence your mobile devices. All right, good morning, everyone. Today is June 3rd, 2025. It's 10:02 a.m. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. On to item number two is to convene as the Story County Board of County Commissioners, bringing us to item number three, which is a pledge of allegiance. You can all join me.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Moving on, item four on today's agenda is public comment. Public comment is welcomed at beginning and end of each meeting. These comments should be limited to matters not on today's calendar agenda. Public comment is again welcomed after each item on the agenda, and those comments should be limited to the agenda's topic. Public comment is limited to three minutes per individual. Is there any public comment in the courtroom today? Come on up, state your name for the record, please.
My name's Derek Metz, and my wife and I own Smash My Trash in Reno, Northern Nevada. And we are award-winning mobile waste compaction service that helps businesses maximize dumpster space and achieve their emission reduction goals. I'm here today regarding the new waste franchise agreement, which, as you know, includes a provision that prohibits compaction of waste. Before this provision was approved, we repeatedly contacted the county to request removal of the specific language. We knew that this provision was added by Waste Management for the sole purpose of shutting down my business. As a result of this new agreement, Waste Management has now formally demanded that Smash My Trash cease all operations in Story County, threatening legal action against both my company and my customers. We have been providing services in Story County since 2021. We have numerous waste service agreements in place, and this exclusivity provision not only interferes with our existing contractual relationships with our customers, but also represents significant overreach of Waste Management. The concept of compacting waste is not new. I'm confident everyone in this room at some point has compacted their own waste. Companies have been compacting waste with a variety of equipment and objects for years. Our equipment is specifically engineered to safely and effectively compact waste. This technology is now utilized globally. While Waste Management may attempt to use these agreements to force us out of business, the practice of compacting waste will persist. We opened our business in 2020, and since then, we've experienced rapid growth. This growth is a direct result of businesses being frustrated with the state of the waste industry. Customer service and response to business needs are huge gaps. It's not uncommon for customers to face lengthy hold times, only to be informed that their full dumpsters cannot be serviced for up to a week. Smash My Trash customer service, ability to rapidly adapt to customers' needs, as well as measurable emission reductions, are some of the reasons that we were named the most innovative green business of 2024. Additionally, I want to go on record stating that Waste Management drivers will ask us to smash the trash so they can safely transport, and they've even said it looks like confetti coming out of the back of the dumpsters when they hit the freeway. I recognize the significant time and effort the county dedicated to this selection process for this agreement. I sincerely believe the county acted in good faith during these negotiations. However, the language of this particular provision is deceptive. It will lead to decrease in the level of service, stifles innovation, and is now displacing an established business. We are not in competition with Waste Management's exclusive right to collect, transport, and dispose of waste for which this franchise agreement was intended. We are, we, and now granting Waste Management the authority to control who can and cannot conduct business is wrong. Story County has a well-deserved reputation for being business-friendly. It is clear that this exclusivity provision was specifically designed and intended to put, to use Story County to force Smash My Trash out of business. Regardless of whether the county is aware or not, Waste Management's intent or misled, the adoption of this provision was effectively a governmental taking of my business, so I'm asking the commissioners to consider removal of this language.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment in the courtroom this morning? All right, not seeing any. We're going to move right along to item number five, which is discussion of possible action. Consideration of possible approval of the agenda for the June 3rd, 2025 meeting. County Manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments about the agenda?
No, I don't. Thank you.
All right. Is there any public comment regarding the agenda and the items that are on that agenda? Not seeing any. Commissioner Gilman, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yes, I, Commissioner Gilman, make a motion to approve the agenda for June 3rd, 2025 meeting as submitted.
There's a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number six, this discussion of possible action. Consideration of possible approval of the minutes from the April 1st, 2025 meeting. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments about those minutes?
Do not.
All right. Is there any public comment regarding the minutes from April 1st? Not seeing any. Commissioner Gilman, you prepared to make a motion?
I, Commissioner Gilman, move to approve the minutes from the April 1st, 2025 meeting.
All right, there's a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving right along to item number seven, this discussion of possible action. Consideration of possible approval of the minutes from the April 15th, 2025 meeting. Commissioner Gilman, any questions or comments about those set of minutes?
No.
All right. Is there any public comment regarding those minutes? Not seeing any. Commissioner Gilman, you prepared to make a motion?
I, Commissioner Gilman, move to approve the minutes from April 15th, 2025 meeting.
All right, there's a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving right along to item number eight, this is today's consent agenda. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments about the consent agenda?
I do not.
All right. How about public comment? We go to the consent agenda. Not seeing any. Commissioner Gilman, you prepared to make a motion?
I, Commissioner Gilman, move to approve first reading the consent agenda.
All right, there's a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving right along to item number nine, this discussion only, no action, no public comment will be taken. These are our committee and staff reports, and we'll kick things off at the sheriff's
Commissioners, good morning. Sheriff Cullen for the record. I've got a few things going on I just wanted to mention today. First off, I'd like to congratulate Deputy Carter Sampson for graduating the Nevada Post Academy on May 22nd. It was a 17-week training program in which he earned their Top Shot Award during the range week, and we're glad to have him back. He's over at the jail right now, but will be going to patrol hopefully pretty soon. So that was a good accomplishment for him. Also like to congratulate our recent Citizen Academy graduates here at the sheriff's office for completing our very first-ever Citizens Academy through the sheriff's office. They completed six sessions over a six-week period where they learned all the ins and outs of the sheriff's office, doing ride-alongs, scenarios, demonstrations, tours, and then listening to some of the guest speakers. That included everything from start to end when it comes to criminal justice in Story County. So that was a neat little program, and we're planning our second one for the fall. The next announcement is third annual, our third annual car safety seat checkpoint will be held at the Delta parking lot in conjunction with the fire district on June 28th from 10 to 2. If you have car seats or need assistance getting your car seat hooked up and properly put in the cars, that's what they're there for. So stop by and get that done. We'd also like to thank Liatt Off-Road Clothing Manufacturer up in Reno for partnering with our off-road unit and outfitting everybody with new gear. It was really beneficial for us, and some of the gear is meant for summertime, so it would be nice to have this summer. And then my last announcement is that the Deputy Sheriff's Association is hosting its second annual Calamity on the Comstock Poker Tournament. It'll be at the Bonanza on June 28th from 5:00 to 12:00 midnight, 5:00 p.m. to 12:00 midnight. Tickets are 80 bucks. It includes dinner, and they'll be raising money to benefit the honor guard at the sheriff's office. And I'll take any questions if you guys have any questions for me.
Awesome. Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate the update. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments for the sheriff?
None, thank you.
All right, great news.
Great, thanks.
Moving right along to the Fire Protection District.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeremy Longcar for the record. I just thought I'd do some information sharing here as we're kind of closing out our billing cycle for the budget year of wildland fires. And this is something that every year when we budget for, it is really just a guessing game. We really don't know what the wildland fire season's going to look like, and sometimes we're close, sometimes we're pretty far off. Last year, we responded to approximately eight out-of-district fires we billed for a total of $467,000. In comparison, this year, as we're still closing out and there's still time left until July 1st, we went out on 39 incidents in which we billed and approximately $1.5 million. So last year, we were more spot-on with the budget than we are this year, but again, we can't, we can't exactly guess how many fires we're going to go on and what we're going to make from that. But it just kind of shows you how we're getting more involved, deploying more resources, and ultimately, that helps us replace our current fleet here at the Service Accounting. Just last week, we had one of our members return. He was on the overhead team down in Mono County for the in-fire. So we're still actively sending staff out, and I anticipate this upcoming year is going to be another busy year. So just to share a little bit for where we're sitting in our wildland division and what we've done, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you, Chief. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments for the chief?
None, thank you.
All right, appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Moving right along to Public Works.
Good morning, Chairman. Commissioners, Jason Worsby for the record. Just a couple of quick updates. We have a contractor starting on doing some significant repairs to the pool this weekend to hopefully get it open in the next three to four weeks. Another thing, as you guys probably know, we've had some pretty significant inconsistent water leaks over the last several weeks, dealing with old infrastructure. It's been quite the challenge, but I've been extremely happy with how my crew has handled all these situations and even a community-wide boil water order down in Silver City. That's all I have currently at this point in time. I have a agenda item later on for road updates.
All right, well, thank you, Jason. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments for Jason?
None, thank you.
All right, appreciate the update. Moving right along to Operations and Projects Coordinator.
He's on my team. His project's performing really well.
All right. It's good to hear. About Business Development Director.
Good morning. Kathy Campfro for the record. I'd like to introduce Jessica Prager, who's a new planner in the Planning Department, so we're very happy to have her joining us. Her first day was yesterday, and she came back today, so we're very excited. So she'll be, we'll be getting her up to speed, and she'll be helping out a lot with a lot of the workload that we've, that we've got there. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that there will be, in the next couple of weeks, the EPA and NDEP are working on doing some mercury testing in town. They have five residences that they're doing some of the testing at. These people have agreed and signed off to allow them to be doing it here. There's about 12 people. In last year, they did some of this also, and they parked here in our parking lot, and were using our restrooms and water and stuff, so kind of a camp, base camp here to the different ones. And then we're going to be meeting with EPA later this month to talk about some of the findings that they found from their testing for last year. That's it, unless you have any questions.
All right, thank you for that update, Kathy. Welcome aboard. Donnie, you have any questions for Kathy?
No, welcome to the team, and thank you for coming back today.
Thank you so much.
How about our admin officer?
No updates this morning.
All right, thank you, Lisa.
Good morning. Adam Wilson, Director of Emergency Management for the record. Couple of quick updates. This week, Story County's Emergency Management was asked to join the state's Incident Management Team. That's a deployable team that would go across the country and help out during disasters, for example hurricanes in Florida. And that just goes to show the program that we've developed here in the county is now gaining that national recognition to go help other communities, so very happy to see that for our team. We taught a Stop the Bleed class last week. We had 18 attendees from the community come to that. That was dynamite to see. We've been teaching two different classes to the school district staff now that they're on summer break to help them get ready for the next school year and be better prepared for emergencies at the school and coordinate better with the county first responders. We assisted Carson City with their Lakeview Community evacuation exercise, and we got a lot of really great lessons learned out of their exercise to apply to ours. Which brings us to, our exercise is Saturday, the 14th at 7:30. That's the Virginia City Highlands evacuation exercise. We've been running it on social medias through Julia. It's up on the website. We've had a couple articles go out to local media outlets, and mailers have been sent to every residence out in the Highlands advising them of this. So we've done about everything we can do to make sure the public's aware. NDOT's going to put a message up on their reader board for us the day before down around the region, so that way we can try and alert the public to what's going on. They're also going to send out a road report that goes to like commercial carriers to let them know to expect delays coming through Geiger Grade area the day of, as we'll be pulling a lot of people onto that highway. And then finally, Quad Public Health has answered our request across the Quad Emergency Managers, and they ordered MCI kits. These are mass casualty kits that we can pre-stage for special events. So each one of these has 15 individual kits, first responders or people who take our Stop the Bleed classes and get trained in how to use them would be able to access. So we will be picking those up hopefully this week from Quad County and get those deployed out in the county, and that is all I have.
Great, thank you for that update, Adam. Commissioner Gilman, you have any questions or comments for Adam?
No, thank you.
All right. Great news on folks coming to Story County for some assistance. Nice job. About the Virginia City Tourism Commission.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Tuttle, Director of Tourism for the record. Big thanks again to the Sheriff's Department Emergency Management in working with us for the parade on Memorial Day. Everything went very smoothly without a hitch. Nice to have all that support and inner department cooperation among us, so it's a big hats off to making it all happen. In the past, we had a unique experience with the plein air painters. This was the international group that came up from Reno. We ended up having four motor coaches plus an additional small shuttle with a total of around 300 painters that were all throughout the town on Wednesday. We did get a very positive response from them, that it was the most exciting part of their entire experience. They went over to Lake Tahoe to do some painting there, where they were downtown in Reno to do some painting, but they responded from the painters enjoyed being here in Virginia City the most, and they commented about the hospitality and generosity of the people here and how welcome they felt. So hats off to the entire county for making them feel as part of it. Memorial Day weekend, we had a great celebration of Harold's Parade, good turnout for that, and the Reno Tahoe Odyssey went on without a hitch, once again, the support of the town to be able to be there as they ran through, and thanks to the sheriff's office for that safety for them coming through. We have had quite a number of familiarization tours. These are people that are interested in bringing groups, buses, et cetera, coming into Story County and up to Virginia City. They've come from Mexico, Canada, Australia, and other parts beyond. There was a small European faction that came through. This coming Wednesday, tomorrow, we've got another group that will be here also, so we're seeing quite an increase in awareness of the people that are coming to visit the town and the area that's with it. As far as events coming up, Street Vibration Spring Rally will be Friday and Saturday. That's the 6th and 7th. Remember, the motorcycles will be coming up Geiger and usually going down 341 or 342 towards Carson City, so be aware of them. Just keep notice. We'll try and set off a little area for motorcycle parking so that here on C Street, they can park safely and congregate together. This is not the big, big event we usually have in the fall, but we will see an increased number of motorcycles that will be up here and enjoying what Virginia City has to offer. There's also a nice performance over at Piper's Opera House on Saturday, June 7th, at 7:00. It is part of For the Song. It will feature Nether Hour, a southern rock and blues band. We're kind of excited to see this series progress. There will be four of them coming up to perform. These are up-and-coming bands that usually open for some of the name band performers that are out there, so we're excited to have them. The Mix and mingle at Piper's Opera House will be sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. Once again, it'll be June 10th, anticipating starting at 5:30 for that, if you'd like to attend. The VCTC Board Meeting for June, which was scheduled for June 12th, has been canceled due to some scheduling conflicts. We will have our regular meeting on, in July, following that up. And of course, don't forget 4th of July, which will be on Friday as we come into the month of July. The parade itself will be at noon, and fireworks should be shortly after dusk, so that's my report.
Thank you for that report, Todd. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments for Todd?
No, thank you, Todd.
All right. Thank you. About the Controller's Office.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Good morning. Bob Hastings, Community Resource Coordinator on behalf of Health and Community Services. We do have a couple announcements we'd like to make. First, you have all been hearing about our bathroom project remodel at the Senior Center. I'm happy to say that that project is complete. It was completed on May 27th. Our seniors, as well as our staff, are extremely excited that they no longer have to step out to the parking lot in the Sandy Huts to use the facilities, but everybody really, really is appreciative of the work that was done. Bathrooms came out beautiful, and now that we are fully ADA compliant, so that's good. We did want to announce that today, Nevada Legal Services will be here in Virginia City and tomorrow in Lockwood at the Senior Center, both days from 9:00 to 3:00. They do some pro bono legal services and share information and advice. We do want to mention that it is primarily on civil matters, not on criminal matters, but if anybody needs any assistance, please come to either one of the facilities, either today in Virginia City or tomorrow in Lockwood. The last announcement that we're extremely excited to share with you. As you are aware, we recently hired two community health workers. They were done because of a grant from the Fund for Resilient Nevada. These are folks that are working with the Sheriff's Department as well as Health and Community Services on substance abuse issues. The project is known as the Shelby Project and is very important to Stacy and many of the staff within the Senior, within the Health and Community Services. We did want to announce that we had reapplied. We had only received that grant for one year. We did reapply for that grant. Stacy turned the paperwork in, and we have secured $363,000 to cover fiscal year '26 and '27. That means that our community health workers will be in the community, working with the sheriff, and helping things out. So that is just some great news that we feel will allow us to continue a new program that's extremely, extremely important to the community. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the update, Bob. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
All right, appreciate the update. Great news coming out of the Senior Center. How about the Recorder's Office?
Nothing today, thank you.
All right, thank you, Drew. IT Department.
Nothing today, Commissioners, thank you.
James. He and Resources.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joseph Starnes for the record. So our office continues to operate smoothly during our busy season and despite our little bit of staffing shortages, which we are working on. We have interviews scheduled, which is awesome. In May, we've experienced, I'll give you a little quick update what May looked like. We experienced a notable uptick in over-the-counter plan reviews. Over-the-counter plan reviews is something we offer for small residential projects to help expedite their permit process, just kind of help the residential people out. So we, notable uptick in over-the-counter plan reviews, permits issued, business licenses granted, and certificate of occupancy inspections. And additionally, we have, we have seen a notable rise in NV Energy Service Connection inspections, along with single-family residents and accessory structure plot inspections. The reason why I mention this is because it's great news for our residential construction as it indicates a positive momentum. It basically, it's picking back up. Because as you know, commercial projects in Story County never, they never falter anymore. It's always steady, and it's always progressive in commercial, while residential, sometimes they tend to fluctuate during the seasons. So we're picking back up, that's awesome. And our code enforcement, I'll, I'll shut up with this. Our code enforcement front, we've been making great strides, thanks to the support of our District Attorney's Office and our collaboration, in addition to, and addition to our full-time staff member that we have now, Scott. In May alone, we successfully abated four cases demonstrating the effectiveness of our strengthened efforts with the steady communication with the District Attorney and our, and our team. And then additionally, our code enforcement team, which is Scott, recently held its, they held their first multi-jurisdictional meeting with representatives in Carson, Douglas, Lion, and Washoe Counties. They discussed training certificates, strategies, challenges, and accomplishments. And this fosters collaboration across the jurisdictions, which I think is pretty neat, and I fully encourage, because I recognize the value in collaboration. It, it helps strengthen our code enforcement initiatives, it's pretty cool. So thank you.
All right, appreciate the update, Joe. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments for Joe?
None, thank you, Joe.
All right, thank you again. How about our Public Relations Officer?
Good morning. Julia Moreno-Fritz, Public Relations Officer for the record. I have a few brief updates to share with you this morning. I recently attended the Government Social Media Conference in Orlando, Florida, and it was a really valuable opportunity to learn about the latest best practices in social media strategy, emergency management, and content creation, and I'm really excited to begin applying some of those things that I learned in the coming weeks to make our communications even more effective and accessible to the public. And on that note, our social media posts for Public Service Week saw great engagement. These posts that highlighted our staff and offering behind-the-scenes looks at county services received, on average, 90% more engagement than our normal posts. So this is just a great reminder that our audience really enjoys seeing the important work that's happening across the county. And lastly, a quick update on our social media growth. We've officially surpassed 1,300 followers on Instagram, and we're just shy of 4,800 on Facebook. When I started, we were at 1,200 and 4,500, so it's exciting to see how consistent posting and engagement have helped grow our audience by over 400 followers across both platforms. And that's it for me today. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, wonderful update. Julia, Commissioner Gilman, anything for Julia?
None, thank you.
All right, appreciate it, appreciate it. How about, how about our DA's office?
Good morning. I have an update. Morning.
All right, morning, Brian. County Manager's Office.
Good morning. Just a couple of items to give you as an update. We are still working on the final stages, I would say the very last stages of transferring that land that the county had gotten from the federal government over to the school district so they can do their school district improvement program. That also includes... That also includes kind of a long-range plan for getting the waste management transfer station out of that site as well. It's not going to happen tomorrow, but we're working on trying to get that to the old Story County dump site if possible. So we'll keep working on that, but we're within weeks or months. Kathy and her team, the District Attorney's Office, everybody working together, get that done. Still working or have launched with our team, working together as a collaborator to come to this board here later with some recommendations for substantial permit license plan review and other reduction in fees, especially for the small business sectors and for individual residential development. So we'll keep you updated on that. Proud of our team, everybody working together on starting that process. And then I will let you know that NDOT has come to the final stages of their analysis for the east-west connector route through the Highlands and north of the Highlands we're all pretty familiar with. And their findings at this point are showing that that project really is not a short-term solution due to costs and other obstacles. There's going to be more of a focus, of course, on widening Interstate 80. We know that, and that process is going to start here this year. They've informed me that they have a plan to do it in such a way that there will always be four lanes of traffic during construction of Interstate 80, in such a way that any type of reductions of lanes would be like a one in the morning in wee hours. Imagine something where they dig the north side of the mountain out, and one day you're driving on it, and the road you were driving on westbound is now an eastbound lane while they're grinding up the old westbound lane, or however I said that. So we're assured that, you know, although there will be disruption in construction, it's not going to just be a choke point of one-lane traffic going in and out of the region. And there is definitely a focus of transportation north of Tri-Center, the La Pasada Route we're familiar with. There's some other potential alignments they're looking at, and of course, Story County is absolutely in the middle of those conversations with Washoe RTC, NDOT, and other partners, and will continue to be so. So it's a little update of kind of what's going on in the region.
All right. Thank you, Austin. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions for Austin?
None, thank you, Austin.
All right. Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
How about our Clerk-Treasurers' Office?
Jim Hindle, Clerk and Treasurer. Just a quick update, as you know, and hopefully you're planning for, the next Board of Commissioners meeting will not be here, but it will be, this is the June 17th meeting, but it will be down at the high school in the training room, at least as it is arranged and being scheduled right now. So watch for that meeting notice to confirm that. The most important part of it is that there will be no YouTube streaming for that, and space is limited, but any participation would need to be in person by either public comment or by staff. So please be arranging that, planning on that. The June 17th meeting will be down at the high school here in Virginia City in the training room.
Thank you, Jim. All right. How about the Comstock Historic District? Do you have an update?
Hello. Shelley Smith, District Officer for the Comstock Historic District Commission, for the record and for those of you who have not had the pleasure of meeting yet. We would like to take this opportunity to extend to you an invitation to come to an open house event that we're hosting tonight at the Comstock History Center located at 20 Northeast Street. We partnered up with the Community Chest organization and the Comstock Kids Program in particular to work on a project that will be our special summer exhibit all summer long, but we are unveiling the children's projects tonight. They all researched and did a lot of work that they put into researching and identifying the places in the Comstock that are special to them, that hold meaning to them. And not only was this project a lot of fun, they've worked very hard on it, but it also served as a very vivid reminder that everyone in this room is a steward of this community. Everything that we do is so that future generations feel like they have a very special place to come home to, to return to, and hopefully one day provide their own contributions to the community. So it was the perfect way for us to sort of kick off a series of events that we will be having to update the construction standards and guidelines for the Comstock Historic District Commission. As stated, all of these regulations and standards exist for the community, so that we feel very strongly that the community needs to be a part of that whole process. We value your input and your feedback, it's so important, and I hope that you guys will all participate in this process. We're having, we've decided to receive input in breaking it down by topic. So the topic for the month of June is going to be exterior house paint colors and building paint colors, storefronts. So we encourage you all to attend, and thank you for the opportunity to come speak to you all today.
Thank you. Hey, before you take off, what was the time for that event tonight?
I'm so sorry, I forgot to say it starts at 4:30, and there will be pizza and refreshments.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Moving right along to Project Manager Chris, do you have an update for us? All right. Let's see. Are there any nonprofits in the room that want to give an update? Come on down.
Good morning, everybody. Eric Shown for the record with Community Chest. It's good to see so many people here. A few highlights for you. Our health clinic, which is, we subcontracted Nevada Health Centers to run the health clinic space at our community center. They will be moving their Health Clinic In-Person Day in July from Monday to Thursday. And the reason being, the Monday holiday closures were adding up, and they want to minimize the days that will be impacted by holidays. So by moving it to Thursdays, it should make the health clinic's in-person services more accessible. So that'll start in July. We'll be getting more messaging out about that, so that people are fully aware of that. Speaking of the community center, you will notice that our summer programming is in full swing. As I was telling a few staff, if you are just in need of an energy boost, just come over to the center for five minutes and hang out with the kids, and you'll get all the energy you need for a full week, I guarantee you. It's one of the things I love about working at Community Chest. So it's in full swing, which means if you could, please be, use caution when you're driving by the community center. There's a lot of kiddos out there, either running around in the park, or swimming at the pool, or utilizing the community center. Just give yourself a few extra seconds when you're driving by. The grand opening, I was really, we were really pleased with the grand opening of our new early childhood education child development center at 951 South C Street by the Pink House. Thank you to all in Story County who attended. We had a total of about 60 parents and kiddos who came, and they're just ecstatic about their new space. But I also wanted to thank the county manager, the sheriff, fire, community and health services, as well as Julia for helping to get the word out. We really were able, I think, to get that, the word out about the importance of early childhood education services in a significant way. Comstock Chronicle covered it, you may have seen that in the newspaper. Then Michael Ann, my chief operating officer, myself, were able to be interviewed on Channel 11 last week and talk about all the wonderful things in Story County. Really did to help us get this across the finish line really quickly. I can see why so many businesses want to be here, because it's really easy to get a project off the ground quickly. And this was our quickest ground, this was our quickest project from concept to completion. And those classrooms are now open. We're slowly sort of filling those spots. We fully expect by the end of June that they will be 100% full. There's that much demand. What this does, by the way, is it more than doubles the amount of early childhood education capacity that we have in Virginia City from 38 to 79 slash 80. So it's more than doubles that. What we have to look forward to coming in the fall is hopefully the opening of the Lockwood Community Center, and that would be another 30 spots for Lockwood, which has never had, that I know, of early childhood education slots available to the residents there. So I think that could potentially be a transformative experience, not only the new community center that will be for everybody, but also the different services that are there. And then I want to end on kind of, I don't like ending on a heavy note, but I think it's important to underline this. So in May, you may have noticed the green ribbons that were tied around some of the poles throughout town. That was for Mental Health Awareness Month. And just to reiterate the importance of that, I have never been so personally touched by stories of suicide as I was in that last month. We had five suicides that were, my staff were directly, they were connected to the person who committed suicide, or by one or two degrees. It was very, very heavy, and it really, what it underlined for me is the tenaciousness of suicidality, and it's really important, I think, the social connection that we're all trying to build and that we spoke of earlier, that we're all in this community together, making sure we're reaching out to one another, that's our first line of defense. And making sure we're taking care of our mental health through all these different programs that we're talking about is as important as taking care of our physical health, like I talked about in open with the health clinic. So just want to reiterate that we do have mental health services available at Community Chest. If somebody needs to talk to a counselor or a community health worker, we have slots available, so don't hesitate to call. So any questions?
Thank you for that update, Eric. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments for Eric?
None, thank you.
All right. Great stuff happening over there. Thank you. Next nonprofit?
Thank you, Commissioners. Nora Steffel for the Fourth Word School Museum. I just wanted to give you some updates for the Fourth Word. Our building restoration, due to your generous grant that you gave us in 2024 for our building restoration, it's almost to completion. So within the North Tower, finishing the North Tower, we're going to have all the Fourth Word vibrant and with a new paint job. And that will take us to the 150 years of the anniversary that is happening next year, so we're looking forward to that. Some updates, we had our Victorian Tea Event last month, which coordinates with Mother's Day and, and basically, we brought in like 75 people attending our event, and it is I guess I can't think of that, what I wanted to say, excuse me, but it was a great, successful event. Coming up, we are having the Fifth Annual Kids Fair with a lot of our community partners that are going to come to the museum and share their departments of how they help with kids. And this is going to be, we'll probably have like around, I think, 15 departments that they are participating, such as UNR Extensions, the KECK Museum, the Nevada Division of Minerals, the Fire, the Story County Fire Department, and other agencies from our community. So that, like I said, is our fifth annual, and it's going to be June 21st, and it starts from 11:00 to 3:00. For children, are free, and it's a free event, just the parents have to pay to come into the museum. So that's that. We also are having the 4th of July event, which is, we've been doing this for three years, and we're opening our balconies. It's the only time that you can see our balconies, and they have fantastic views of our Story County fireworks. And that will be, of course, on the 4th of July. We start from 8:00 to 10:00 p.m., and it has entertainment and heavy hors d'oeuvres, and the tickets are on sale for $70. Our museum is open seven days a week now, from May 1st to October 1st, and we are open to our public, and hopefully we'll see you all in our events. And finally, I just want to say, on behalf of the Historic Fourth Word School Foundation, I want to extend our deepest thanks for your continued support to our mission and our work in preserving Virginia City's last one standing historic landmark. Your ongoing commitment through the Story County Program Support Grant makes remarkable difference, not just to our organizations, but to our generations of visitors, students, and community members who walk through the doors every year. Your investment ensures our 149-year-old building remains safe, welcoming, and vibrant. Because of you, you are able to continue critical maintenance projects, support staff who keeps the museum running day to day, and offer programs that bring Comstock history to life in creative and engaging ways. We know that funding decisions are never easy, and we don't take your partnership for granted. Your belief in our mission gives the confidence to think bigger, reach farther, and do more for our community. So once again, from all of us at the Historic Fourth Word, thank you for standing with us as stewards of history, culture, and education. We look forward to continuing this important work together in the year ahead. So if you have any questions?
Thank you, Nora. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments for Nora?
None, thank you.
All right. Thank you for the update. Come on down.
Good morning, Commissioners and Manager Austin Osborne. I'm John Strahan, a proud lifetime member of VFW Post 8071. Like to take a few minutes this morning and give you a recap of our last year, because it's been a year since I've been up here. The members of VFW Post 8071 continue to support and serve the VFW mission of providing service and support to veterans in the community, as you've seen us do throughout the year. Last year's fundraising efforts, through the hard work of our members, we raised over $60,000, $40,000 of which went into our building fund, another $20,000 dispersed amongst the community in our programs, whether it's aid to veterans, aid to senior citizens, school programs, and scholarships. Legislative action. Some of you know, we had two bills in front of the legislature this year, SB 232 and AB 300. Both were funding grant bills for a boost in our building fund to help us complete the building project up on C Street. We had 28 sponsors and cosponsors of these bills on both sides of the aisle. Myself and other members of the post made more than 75 office calls at the legislature, promoting the bill, promoting the VFW, and talking to people. Unfortunately, we never even got past Ways and Means Committee. So, Inshallah, we will learn for next time and try it again. Our post continues to grow in membership. Obviously, it's a fact of life, the Korean and Vietnam War veterans are moving on, getting older. Our targets being the global war on terror, Iraq, Afghanistan, Somalia. And in the last year, we've picked up, I believe, 10 new members, all under the age of 50, which is pretty good for the VFW. I'd like to say thank you for the support grant that we continue to receive from the county. We look at this as a force multiplier, where we spend $2,000 to $3,000 to put on an event to raise, you know, $10,000 to $12,000. Having the support grant in the background to help us offset and defray some of our costs is very beneficial. Again, thank you to the county. And lastly, I'd like to take a minute to introduce Janelle Milletz. Janelle, Janelle is a Story County, Virginia City resident, right up here on C Street. She's a veteran of the Iraq War, and she is the first female commander of Post 8071, newly installed last month. 78 years this post has been in existence, and she's the first female and also the youngest commander of the post. So I'd like to again introduce Janelle and thank her for all that she's done to get us to where we're at today. Are there any questions?
Great. Thank you for that update, John. Congratulations to you. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Appreciate what you are doing out there.
Good morning, Commissioners. County Manager Osborne, my name is Erica Perry. I'm Executive Director of St. Mary's Art Center, and I just wanted to give you a brief update as well. I'm Executive Director of St. Mary's Art Center and I just wanted to give you a brief update as well. We have kicked off our season on Easter, of course, with the Easter egg hunt on the lawn, which was wildly successful and the most attended hunt to date. And we have also held our spring art reception, also very successful. We're looking forward to our first summer artisan fair on June 28th and 29th. It's going to be a two-day event, similar to our holiday fair, but without the holiday, if you will. And so we have a handful of seats or tables left for any artists in the community that wish to apply. And we should have about 30 tables for everyone to come and enjoy and that is a free event to the community. We also have an intimate Fourth of July spectacular event. This is our signature annual fundraiser. It is our largest for us and tickets are now available on Eventbrite. This is highly curated, it's a catered event and it's kept at 54 people. So if you would like seats, I encourage you to purchase them now. And then also, all of our other classes and special events and artist and writing retreats are available on our website and we encourage anyone who's interested to check that out and you can always book your spots there as well. And just as a review of the previous year, I'm not going to go into the details, but I just want to say that it is always an honor. Last year was our 60th year in business. We're officially in our 61st and we take great pride in being that longest operating nonprofit in Story County. And we couldn't do it without you and we thank you for your support. Do you have any questions?
Thank you for that update, Erica. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments for Erica?
None, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other nonprofits that I missed or any folks on staff that I did not call for an update? All right, not to put you on the spot, but Lee, do you have anything for us from the Planning Commission?
No, thank you.
All right. Okay, well, I think that covers everybody. Last chance, nobody that I missed? All right. Thank you again for all those updates. It's always good to hear the good things happening in our community. Now we are on to item number 10, which is Board Comment. Start off to my left. Commissioner Gilman, do you have anything for us today?
None at this time, thank you.
All right. I do have one item and I would ask, over the last week or so, we lost Virginia City Resident David Frayley. If we can all have a moment of silence for David, I would greatly appreciate that. All right, thank you. Moving right along to item number 11, which is Discussion for Possible Action. Consideration of an Approval of an Agreement for Professional Services Contract between Story County and JUB Engineering, Inc. This contract is related to on-call engineering professional services related to the TRI Center Drainage Analysis. JUB will be reimbursed for time and materials related to assisting county staff with the analytics of, excuse me, the analysis of the TRI Center Drainage Issues related to public areas and proposed public areas as identified in the Story County and Tahoe Reno Industrial Center Development Agreement. This contract is for Phase One of the analysis, which will research and evaluate drainage issues for existing and potential public areas, not to exceed $81,100. This amount has been included in both the Planning Department's budget for fiscal year '24, '25 and '25, '26 under the category of professional services. Kathy?
Thank you. So yes, this is for Phase One of a drainage analysis that our staff is looking at for the tri-center general area. This wouldn't be for anything that's private property, but as more and more developments happening and drainage is using existing drainage facilities, we're looking to try to figure out what we need to be prepared for on the public roadways and then the areas that have the potential to be dedicated to Story County, what we should be looking for and how those should be designed to match the overall system. So we've selected JUB Engineering. They are the group, you may recall, that worked for us with the Lockwood Hazard Mitigation Plan, the Long Valley Creek Hazard Mitigation Plan and staff was very satisfied with their work. So staff is recommending approval of this. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you Kathy. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not.
Okay. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Not seeing any. Commissioner Gilman, you prepared to make a motion?
Aye, Commissioner Gilman, move to approve agreement for professional services contract between Story County and JUB Engineering, Inc. This contract is related to on-call and engineering professional services related to the TRI Center Drainage Analysis. This contract is for Phase One of the analysis, which will research and evaluate drainage issues for existing and potential public areas, not to exceed $81,100. This amount has been included in both the Planning Department's budget for fiscal year '24, '25 and '25, '26 under the category of professional services.
All right, there's a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Thank you Kathy. Moving on to item number 12, this Discussion for Possible Action. Consideration and Possible Approval of the Purchase Agreement between Story County and Dominion Voting Systems for ballot marking devices and accessories in an amount not to exceed $21,404.50.
Morning Commissioners, Mark Allen, Clerk and Treasurer's Office for the record. In March of this year, President Trump issued the executive order preserving and protecting the integrity of American elections. As a result of this executive order, our voter verified paper audit trail devices are out of compliance as they record a QR code record of the voters' ballots. This requires us to transition to the ballot marking devices, also known as BMDs. We've been in discussion and coordination with Dominion Voting Systems and because of the tight market supply of the BMDs, they are holding the quantity required for Story County. But we would need to place an order as soon as possible to be guaranteed that supply. And I'll turn it over to Jim.
Yeah, the transition to the BMD will be one, I think as you remember voting, there's the VV PAT, the Voter Verified Paper Trail, was next door, it was a scroll, had a light. It was difficult for people to read and it was also one that we knew Dominion was going to be phasing out in the future, but our system was working well and there wasn't a need to replace it until this executive order has basically made them obsolete. As you saw in the packet, there was a note and an opinion from the Secretary of State's Office that we must move forward with this. But on a benefit side, what is going to happen is that each voter, as they mark their ballot with the touchscreen as they had been used to, will instead of that touchscreen recording it onto a thumb drive device that we later tabulate, they'll get a printed out ballot that they can verify and see, hold in their hands and look at it and make sure that that's what their vote was supposed to be. If not, we can manage where they can revote, but if that is approved, then they would deposit that and put it through a tabulator and it would be recorded at the polling center. With these BMD devices, we've been in conversation with Dominion and at this point, it makes sense for us to pull the trigger on them. I think as we go forward, this is going to be something that not only has a ballot established paper trail, but it leaves us more flexibility in case something does happen during an election where we have to go back and go through and reference ballots. It'll be a lot more straightforward and give voters more confidence in what their vote is being posted to be.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Gilman, do you have any questions?
If I can make one more comment on this. Because this is an out-of-budget expense, that's why we're bringing it to you. The reason that we're doing it in this budget year is because, as Mark said, Dominion has the inventory. But given both lead times, the demand that is anticipated across the country for these devices and because of some of the uncertainty with international trade and sourcing, it is determined that we should do this ahead of time. Dominion is giving us a break to do it sooner than later and we've been in conversation with the comptroller and this is something that the comptroller is very confident we can work out within the clerk's budget.
Great. Commissioner Gilman, any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
All right. Is there any public comment on this item? Not seeing any. Commissioner Gilman, you prepared to make a motion?
Aye, Commissioner Gilman, move to approve the County Clerk and Treasurer to sign a proposed purchase agreement with Dominion Voting Systems for ballot marking devices and accessories in the amount not to exceed $21,404.50 and the corresponding Fourth Amendment to the 2017 original agreement with Dominion Voting Systems.
All right, there's a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you Jim, thanks Mark. Moving right along to item number 13, this is Discussion for Possible Action. Consideration and Possible Approval for the County Chairman Carmona to sign and approve the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Developments Letter of Conditions and Associated Forms for the Fire Station 71 Rebuild Project. Sarah?
Sarah, starts for the record. So the Fire Station 71 Rebuild, which was awarded and will be managed by the county, is being partially funded through the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development, commonly referred to as USDA, and that's through their Community Facilities Program. So in order for the USDA to obligate the funds for the project, the county will need to sign and return the letter of conditions and its associated forms. These forms are the Letter of Intent to Meet the Conditions, a Request for Obligation of Funds, an Equal Opportunity Agreement, an Assurance Agreement and a Request for Obligation of Funds Form. These are the same forms, of course, with different project information that the county signed for the Fairgrounds Projects that is also being partially funded through the USDA. That's all I have.
All right, thank you Sarah. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments for Sarah?
None, thank you.
All right, is there any public comment regarding this item? Not seeing any. Commissioner Gilman, you prepared to make a motion?
Aye, Commissioner Gilman, approve County Commissioner, no, County Chairman Carmona to sign and approve the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Developments Letter of Conditions and Associated Forms for the Fire Station 71 Rebuild Project.
All right, there's a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you Sarah. Moving on to item number 14, which is Recession to Convene as the Story County Highway Board. Bringing us to item number 15, which is Discussion, No Possible Action. It's a Report of the Public Works Department Regarding Roads and Highways Throughout Story County. Jason?
Chairman Commissioners, Jason Worsbecky for the record again. This, you may recall about a month, month and a half ago, I got the approval from you guys to proceed with this year's road project with the recommendation of awards of cruise construction. Just found out this morning, they've been unresponsive on schedule so far. Project's supposed to start on Thursday. So if they do not respond by Thursday, then we submit to accept the second place bidder, which was SNC Construction. So other than that, we've been handling multiple small projects throughout the county. Will continue to do so and be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you Jason. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions for Jason?
None, thank you.
All right. Saw the speed bumps are up. Thank you for that, keeping people in check. And I don't have any questions for you, so thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 16, is to recess convene as the Story County Liquor Licensing Board. Bringing us to item number 17, which is Discussion for Possible Action. All right, Discussion for Possible Action. Consideration and Possible Approval of the Second Reading for the Off Sale, On Sale Liquor License. Applicant is Leslie Ann Lutz, Crazy Calamities at 420 South B Street, Virginia City, Nevada.
Deputy Frank Valdez, Story County Sheriff's Office for the record. Since the last reading, no further information has come up that would be considered a disqualifier. That's all I have unless there are any further questions.
All right, thank you Deputy Valdez. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Sheriff?
Nothing, please.
All right. Is there any public comment? Not seeing any. Commissioner Gilman, you prepared to make a motion?
Aye, Commissioner Gilman, motion to approve the second reading of Off Sale, On Sale Liquor License. Applicant is Leslie Ann Lutz, Crazy Calamities, 420 South B Street, Virginia City, Nevada.
All right, there's a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second. All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you Deputy Valdez. Congrats to Crazy Calamities. Moving on to item number 18, is to recess to convene as the Story County Fire Protection District Board. Bringing us to item number 19, which is Discussion for Possible Action. Consideration and Possible Approval for the Fire Chairman Carmona to sign and approve the USDA Rural Developments Letter of Conditions and Associated Forms for Fire Station 71 Rebuild Project. Sarah?
Sarah starts for the record. So the Letter of Conditions and the Associated Forms for that Fire Station 71 Rebuild Project will also need to be signed by the Fire Commissioners per the guidance I received from the USDA's headquarters as there is a continuing grant condition or conditions that need to be satisfied after grant completion. And these can be found in the Letter of Conditions in Section 3. Lot of it's to do with audit requirements and then just to make sure that the fire station is continuing to be used as a fire station. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you Sarah. Anything, Chief? All right. Fire Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
All right. Is there any public comment? Not seeing any. Fire Commissioner Gilman, entertain and make a, are you prepared to make a motion? Geez.
Aye, Fire Commissioner Gilman, approve Fire Chairman Carmona to sign and approve the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Developments Letter of Conditions and Associated Forms for the Fire Station 71 Rebuild Project.
All right, there's a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you Sarah. Moving on to item number 20, this Discussion for Possible Action. Consideration and Possible Approval to Proceed with a Request for Statement of Qualifications for Architectural and Engineering Services to Develop, Design and Associate Construction Documents for Improvements to the Newly Required Building Located at 300 Italy Drive. That's the future site of Fire Station 75. Chief?
Hi, yes Commissioners, Jeremy Longcar for the record. Just as the title describes, this is basically the starting point. This is when we get the architects and engineers in there to evaluate the property as it sits and to start putting together a plan and composing the construction documents for that. We do have some money in the budget moving into this next year, the FY '25, '26 budget for this project. I don't anticipate us using much of that as we know these types of construction processes can take some time. However, we can keep you abreast of what changes. So this is just approval to send out the RFQ and start soliciting somebody to do the design and construction documents.
All right, thank you Chief. Commissioner Gilman, Fire Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
All right. How about a public comment? Not seeing any. Fire Commissioner Gilman, you prepared to make a motion?
Aye, Fire Commissioner Gilman, move to approve the issuance of a Request for Statement of Qualifications for Architectural and Engineering Services for Design and Construction Documentation Associated with the Development of Fire Station 75 at 300 Italy Drive.
There's a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. On to item number 21, this Discussion for Possible Action. Consideration and Possible Approval for the Fire Chief to Pursue a Donation from Switch for a Quin truck ladder not to exceed $2.6 million and an Authorization to Enter into an Agreement for Said Donation. Chief?
Hi, yes Commissioners, Jeremy Longcar again for the record. So preliminary, we've been in discussions with Switch and they are interested in assisting the district in obtaining a new ladder truck to serve the industrial park. With that being said, it's not just that easy. Obviously, we want some form of an agreement in place that if they do make this commitment, because it is substantial, it's up to, and I put an amount not to exceed $2.6 million, but because of the size of this purchase and obviously the time, right now to have a new, brand-new ladder truck built, we could be looking at multiple years, up to three to four years to have this done. So I am asking kind of a big ask of the board here is multiple steps all at once. And that is for your approval to continue with the negotiations with Switch, to get an agreement put together. And then also as one comes up, they do produce stock units, they produce a list every month and it is literally first come, first served. So there is an opportunity to get on this quicker, I think for Switch's sake, as well as the fire. as well as the fire district, the sooner we can make this happen, the better. We don't want a contract sitting out there waiting years and years and years for one to be built. So that's kind of why I lumped it all together here. Um, but I, I'll definitely keep the board, um, up to date as far as where we're sitting on that. However, this approval here will allow us to move at a lot faster pace and hopefully grab one of those stock units as it's being produced. So that will be done after the agreement is fully executed, and I'll answer any other questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Fire Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, I do not. Thank you.
All right. How about, uh, public comment? Not seeing any. Fire Commissioner Gilman, you prepared to make a motion?
Aye, Fire Commissioner Gilman, move to authorize the fire chief to pursue a donation from Switch LTD for the purchase of a quint fire truck, I'm sorry, ladder truck, uh, in the amount not to exceed two point six million, and to approve the fire chief entering into formal agreement with Switch LTD to facilitate and finalize this donation.
There's a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number twenty-two, which is discussion for possible action. Uh, consideration and possible approval of resolution number twenty-five dash two seven four, updating mitigation rates for the deployment of emergency and non-emergency services by the Story County Fire Protection District for incidents outside of Story County, large-scale hazardous material incidents, motor vehicle accidents, and negligent or criminal fires to include rates for a rapid extraction module support unit and updates to fuel costs. Chief?
Uh, yes, Commissioners, Jeremy Longcar again for the record. Um, based on that last fire we just had last week and some of the complications we had with billing, there was a last-minute change to this, which I presented copies out to the public, and if it's all right, I, to approach, I'd like to provide you guys with the updated billing rates. And just to make it, make it really easy, those last-minute updates were basically just typing. So the way we send things out, we have type one, type two, type three engines. Um, that helps determine the rates. One of the things we learned with this last fire, the infire down in Mono County, was we sent equipment that we don't generally send. We sent for the first time our chip truck, and they wanted to know what type it was. So we had, we had to go through and add just typing. Um, other than that, the other changes are naturally wages. As they go up, we have to, we have to change those wages. Uh, fuel costs are always taken into consideration, as well as adding that REMS or Rapid Extraction Module. That is something new to the county here. That is what we got the side-by-side and all the rescue equipment that, in its downtime, it's servicing the Highlands and other parts of the county for that backcountry rescue. Um, in the event it's not doing anything and it's requested on a fire, we can send it out as a fully-equipped unit to serve that same purpose somewhere else. Um, other than that, this is just our basic update. As we talked about the fires this morning, that billing is based off these rates. So this is an annual occurrence. As a reminder to everyone, no, we do not bill local county residents for putting out their fire. This is strictly for off-district or hazardous materials incidents that we do bill for, uh, that are not covered under our taxes. So we just don't want to carry that financial burden for those things that we're not getting adequate funding for. Other than that, I'll take any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
So would this be something like out-of-state? When we send things out-of-state, this would be the billing for that purpose?
That is correct, and that can happen, um, as well just out of county. Um, we do have agreements with all our neighbors, and fortunately, we do have those agreements because they come and help us. Uh, those agreements are limited to twenty-four hours, because after twenty-four hours, that agency that's helping the other agency obviously has quite a financial burden when you lose your staff, your backfilling stations. So for most of our agreements, even after twenty-four hours, um, we need to start billing for those. Um, so this, it could happen in Washoe County, it could happen in Carson, anywhere around us, but primarily, we do use these, uh, for just out-of-state fires or something far out of the region.
Thank you.
Chief, if I wanted to be a great dad, I could rent the type-one engine for two hundred eighty-five bucks an hour to go to a birthday party?
You could.
All right.
We have a mechanism set up.
Good to know.
Um, eh, you know, as well, not to get too sidetracked, but it was great to hear, you know, uh, emergency management's comment about going out on, on fires, and, and these are the type of things that we need in place to make sure that the county isn't, isn't bearing that full financial burden. So I'll, I'll work with Adam as well to try to get something set up on the county side.
All right. Thank you, Chiefs. Um, is there any public comment regarding this item? Not seeing any. Fire Commissioner Mitchell, uh, Mitchell, jeez, sorry about that. Fire Commissioner Kilman, are you prepared to make a motion?
Uh, aye, Fire Commissioner Gilman, move to approve resolution number two-five dash two-seven-four, uh, updating mitigation rates for the deployment of emergency and non-emergency services by the Story County Fire Protection District for incidents outside of Story County, large-scale hazardous material incidents, special operations, and negligent or criminal fires.
All right, there's a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Onto item number twenty-three, which is, uh, discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval of resolution number twenty-five dash two-seven-five, a resolution setting grade and salary range for employees fixed by ordinance or resolution per NRS four-seven-four dot four-seven-zero for appointed Story County Fire Protection District officials for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year and superseding prior-year action by resolution for appointed Story County Fire District employees with grade adjustments for the cost of living increases, step percentage reduction, and, uh, addition of a fleet manager mechanic's position. Brandy?
Good morning, Commissioners, Brandy Lopez for the record. With this salary resolution, we are establishing a new position of fleet manager mechanic. Um, the proposed grade level for this position is based off a combination of external market salary, external market salary and internal alignment for, to ensure both fairness and competitiveness. We have also included an updated pay schedule that reflects a one percent pay increase applied after accounting for the mandatory PERS rate increase this year. In addition, we've made an adjustment to the step progression structure, reducing the percentage rates between steps from five point two point, five point two-six percent to approximately five point three-six percent. This change aligns with the fire district's long-term objective of transitioning to a uniform three-point-five percent step structure by fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven. That's all I have at this time, so either Jeremy or I would be able to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you, Brandy. Fire Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not. Thank you.
All right. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Not seeing any. Uh, Fire Commissioner Gilman, you prepared to make a motion?
Uh, aye, Fire Commissioner Gilman, move to approve resolution number two-five dash two-seven-five, a resolution setting the grade and salary rates, uh, for appointed Story County Fire Protection District officials for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, as required by NRS four-seven-four dot four-seven-zero. The resolution supersedes all prior resolutions addressing appointed employees' compensation and includes grade adjustments to reflect cost of living increases, a reduction in the step percentage structure, and the addition of a fleet manager mechanic position.
All right, there's a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Brandy. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number twenty-four is to recess to reconvene as the Story County Board of County Commissioners, bringing us to item number twenty-five, which is discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval of resolution number twenty-five dash seven-six-seven, granting the veterans of Foreign Wars Evans Kendall Post eighty-seventy-one, a five oh one C nineteen nonprofit, a sum not to exceed ten thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-five through twenty-six, for the purpose of providing services to veterans and the Story County community. Sarah?
Sarah starts for the record. So under NRS two-four-four point one-five-zero-five, a grant of money to a nonprofit organization must be made right, by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, which specifies the purpose of the grant and any conditions imposed on the expenditure of the granted money, and the proposed resolution meets the requirements of this statute. So the veteran of Foreign of, uh, Foreign Wars Evans Kendall Post eight zero seven one is requesting ten thousand dollars to support operating expensive fundraising efforts and VFW programming, and this is the same amount as requested and approved last year. And we have members of the VFW here if you have any questions or if you have anything else yet. I know you did a comment earlier.
All right. Thank you. Do you guys have anything to add or?
Okay. Again, for the record, John Strahan, member of VFW Post eight zero seven one, accompanied by Commander Janelle Millet of VFW Post eight zero seven one. Were we able to answer any questions that the commission or the county manager may have about our application for this grant and our intended uses of the money?
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
None. Thank you.
All right. I don't have any questions. Is there any public comment? Not seeing any. Commissioner Gilman, are you prepared to make a motion?
Uh, I am. Uh, aye, Commissioner Gilman, move to approve resolution number two-five dash seven-six-seven, granting the veterans of Foreign, Foreign Wars Evans Kendall Post eight zero seven one, a five oh one C nineteen nonprofit, a sum not to exceed ten thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six, for the purpose of providing veteran services to veterans and the Story County community.
All right, there's a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
On behalf of the VFW Post eighty-seventy-one, we just want to thank the commission and Sarah. Thank you very much for your help and your continued support.
You're more than welcome. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number twenty-six, discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval of resolution number twenty-five dash seven-six-eight, granting the historic Fourth Ward School Foundation, a five oh one C three nonprofit, a sum not to exceed a hundred twenty thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-five through twenty-six, for the purpose of preserving the historic Fourth Ward School Museum, a county-owned building, and for promoting the history of the Comstock and Story County. Sarah?
Sarah starts for the record. So under NRS two-four-four point one-five-zero-five, a grant of money to a nonprofit organization must be made by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, which specifies the purpose of the grant and any conditions imposed on the expenditure of the granted money, and the proposed resolution meets the requirement of this statute. So the Historic Fourth Ward School Foundation is requesting a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to support minor building maintenance, IT maintenance, software expenses, utility expenses, and payroll expenses, and this is the same amount as requested and approved last year, and Nora is here with the Fourth Ward School Museum if there are any questions.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments about this item?
Uh, no questions. Thank you.
All right. How about public comment? Not seeing any. Commissioner Gilman, are you prepared to make a motion?
Aye, Commissioner Gilman, move to approve resolution number two-five dash seven-six-eight, uh, generating, uh, granting, uh, the Historic Fourth Ward School Foundation, a five oh one C three nonprofit, a sum not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, for the purpose of preserving the Historic Fourth Ward School Museum, a, a county-owned building for the promotion, uh, and for promoting the history of the Comstock and Story County.
All right, there's a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Onto item number twenty-seven, this discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval of resolution number twenty-five dash seven-six-nine, granting St. Mary's Art Center, a five oh one C three nonprofit, a sum not to exceed a hundred and one thousand ten dollars and zero cents for fiscal year twenty-five through twenty-six, for the purpose of preserving the St. Mary's Art Center, county-owned building, and supporting arts and culture through education and cultural offerings. Sarah?
So Sarah starts for the record. So under NRS two-four-four point one-five-zero-five, a grant of money to a nonprofit organization must be made by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, which specifies the purpose of the grant and any conditions imposed on the expenditure of the granted money. This proposed resolution meets the requirement of that statute. And so St. Mary's Art Center is requesting a hundred and one thousand ten dollars to support operating and facility costs, staff compensation, and programming support. This is a decrease of five thousand and seven hundred and fifteen dollars from last year's request, and Erica from St. Mary's is here if there are any questions.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
None. Thank you.
All right. Is there any public comment regarding item number twenty-seven? Not seeing any. Commissioner Gilman, are you prepared to make a motion?
Aye, Commissioner Gilman, move to approve resolution number two-five dash seven-six-nine, granting St. Mary's Art Center, Inc., five oh one C three nonprofit, a sum not to exceed one hundred and one thousand ten dollars for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, for the purpose, uh, of preserving the St. Mary's Art Center and county-owned building and supporting arts and culture through education and cul- cultural offerings.
All right, there's a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Onto item number twenty-eight, uh, discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval of resolution number twenty-five dash seven-seven-zero, granting the one oh nine Comstock Ladies, a five oh one C three nonprofit, a sum not to exceed six thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-five through twenty-six, for the purpose of preserving heritage and community through specific programs that support the children of Story County. Sarah?
Sarah starts for the record. So under NRS two-four-four one-five-zero-five, a grant of money to a nonprofit organization must be made right, by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, which specifies the purpose of the grant and any conditions imposed on the expenditure of the granted money. The proposed resolution meets the requirement of that statute. So the one oh nine Comstock Ladies are requesting six thousand dollars to help support their annual cowboy barbecue fundraiser rental costs and their marketing operating, marketing and operating expenses. This is an increase of one thousand one hundred from last year's request, and Terry from the one oh nine Comstock Ladies is here if there are any questions or if you'd like to make a comment.
I just want to thank you so much for your support this past year. Um, it's really helped us. We're small but mighty.
Thank you. Do you mind just stating the name, uh, your name for the record, please?
Sure. It's Terry Whitworth. I'm the president of the one oh nine Comstock Ladies.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
None. Thank you.
All right. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Not seeing any. Commissioner Gilman, you prepared to make a motion?
Aye, Commissioner Gilman, move to approve resolution number two-five dash seven-seven-zero, granting the one oh nine Comstock Ladies, a five oh one C three nonprofit, a sum not to exceed six thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six, for the purpose of preserving heritage and community through specific programs that support the children of Story County.
There's a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item number twenty-nine, discussion for possible action. Consideration and possible approval of resolution number twenty-five dash seven-seven-one, granting the Community Chest, Inc., a five oh one C three nonprofit, to sum of four hundred thirty-five thousand seven hundred sixty-seven dollars, for fiscal year twenty-five through twenty-six, for the specific purpose of funding health and human services and educational programs. Sarah?
Sarah starts again for the record. Under NRS two-four-four one-five-zero-five, a grant of money to a nonprofit organization must be made by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, which specifies the purpose of the grant and any conditions imposed on the expenditure of the granted money. This proposed resolution meets the requirement of that statute. And so Community Chest, E, is requ- or Community Chest for short, is requesting three hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred and sixty-seven, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars to help support the library, health nurse, and community center. They are also requesting an additional one hundred thousand dollars for that early childhood education support for Story County families. So this is an increase of a hundred and three thousand one hundred and six dollars from last year's request, which is largely due to that new one hundred thou- one hundred thousand dollar request for that early childhood education support for Story County families. So we have Eric with the Community Chest here if there are any questions or if you'd like to make a comment.
All right.
Good morning. For the record, Eric Schoen of Community Chest. Just wanted to explain how that hundred thousand dollar early childhood education, um, those funds can be accessed by Story County families. It's intended only for Story County families. They have to be a resident in Story County, and they can have their child at any early childhood education center with Community Chest or off the hill anywhere else, but they will, what we'll need to have them do is reach out to us. Uh, our, um, point of contact would be Peach Peretti. We'll get this out so it's not a mystery for everybody, so that she can then share the application and talk with them about how they can qualify for the largest benefit. We'll probably also need to have proof of enrollment at these other centers if they're not with us, just to make sure that we're paying directly to the center, um, the, the cost for that particular child. But in that- But in that way, we'll make it equitable for all Story County families, regardless of whether they're with us or some other early childhood education provider. And just as a reminder, early childhood education is, for us in the last nine years, been ranked as one of the top two needs for Story County families. As I said on Channel eleven, families need to know that their kids are at a safe spot, and the kids need to be in a safe place so that the parents can then go work or do whatever they need to do and live fulfilling, productive lives. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you, Eric. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments for Eric?
I do not, thank you.
Alright.
Before we make a motion, we have a technical thing with Zoom. Can we pause just for a second?
Sure.
Brian can't hear us.
Okay. We're just going to take a pause here for a minute, folks. Try to get some audio stuff sorted out.
How about Noel Brian?
Yeah, suggest he sign out if he signed back in.
Okay, I'll text him. Alright, Brian, can you hear us? Looks like you cannot hear us. I'll come on my phone.
Has anybody checked with Karen? Would she hear?
Yeah. Turned chat or text.
Okay. System doesn't sound. Hey, well, Brian, do you want to tell Ragus his results?
Yeah, that's great. So we can move forward.
Okay.
Look, how did that decide?
So, Brian, is there feedback?
If he thinks himself, it should have been that. If Brian thinks himself, he won't hear.
Okay, Brian, mute your. Okay, now, there's no, there's still feedback.
There's still feedback.
Can you mute your Zoom? Okay, now, there's no feedback. Can you hear us, Brian? Okay, I'll put you on the table, Brian. Let me know if you have any problems. Okay.
Alright. And we left off with public comment, and there was no public comment. Did you make a motion yet, Donnie?
Uh, no, I don't think I did.
Okay. So, Commissioner Gilman, are you prepared to make a motion?
I, Commissioner Gilman, move to approve resolution number two-five dash seven-seven-one, granting the Community Chest, Inc., a five oh one C three nonprofit, the sum of four hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred sixty-seven dollars for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, for the specific purpose of funding health and human services and educational programs.
Alright, there's a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item number thirty. This is discussion for possible action. Consideration of possible approval of resolution number twenty-five dash seven-seven-two, granting the Story County Jeep Posse, a five oh one C three nonprofit, a sum not to exceed twelve thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-five through twenty-six, for the purpose of aiding and assisting all Story County residents. Sarah?
Is that, did it take twelve thousand dollars?
Sorry?
I'm just double checking the numbers. The numbers are not correct on mine. Yes, it's just my error. Twelve thousand is correct. Okay, so Sarah starts for the record. Under NRS two four four one five zero five, a grant of money to a nonprofit organization must be made by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, which specifies the purpose of the grant and any conditions imposed on the expenditure of the granted money. The proposed resolution meets the requirement of this statute. So, the Jeep Posse is requesting twelve thousand dollars for building and vehicle maintenance, member training, and assistance, shooting and range repair, and search and rescue equipment. This is an increase of two thousand dollars from last year's request. And Scott from the Jeep Posse is here if there are any questions or if you'd like to comment.
Great.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Scott Schoen. I'm the president of the Story County Jeep Posse. I probably should have given an update during the nonprofits, and I apologize for that. Just to kind of give you an overview, we traditionally, since nineteen sixty-two, have served as a search and rescue branch for the Sheriff's Department. We had a falling out under the previous administration, but since Sheriff Collins come into office, he invited us back into that role. So, the increase that you're seeing in our request for this year, a lot of, first of all, thank you for the grant for last year. A lot of that has gone into training and professionalizing our team, making sure that we're certified to carry out those search and rescue missions. And because we had fallen by the wayside for a number of years, we have a number of equipment needs that we do need to update. And that's why we are requesting an increase this year. But we do want to say thank you for your continued support of the Jeep Posse.
Alright, thank you. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not, thank you.
Is there any public comment regarding this item? Not seeing any. Vice Chairman, uh, excuse me. Commissioner Gilman, are you prepared to make a motion?
I, Commissioner Gilman, move to approve resolution two-five seven-seven-two, granting the Story County Jeep Posse, a five oh one C three nonprofit, a sum not to exceed twelve thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six, for the purpose of aiding and assisting all Story County residents.
There's a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item number thirty-one. This is discussion for possible action. Consideration of possible approval of resolution number twenty-five dash seven-seven-three, granting the University of Nevada Reno Story County Extension, a five oh one C three nonprofit, a sum not to exceed thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty-five through twenty-six, for the purpose of addressing contemporary issues in the areas of agriculture, horticulture, community development, health and nutrition, personal and family development, and natural resources. Sarah?
Sarah starts for the record. So, for the last time, under NRS two four four one five zero five, a grant of money to a nonprofit organization must be made by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, which specifies the purpose of the grant and any conditions imposed on the expenditure of the granted money. The proposed resolution meets the requirements of that statute. And so, UNR Cooperative Extension is requesting thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollars to support salaries, supplies, and mileage for staff providing program in the county. This is an increase of five hundred dollars from last year's request. And Adam with the Extension is here if there are any questions or if you'd like to make a comment.
Good morning, Commissioner. Adam Carpenter for the record. I just wanted to say this is, uh, my, I just entered in this position in January, so certainly looking forward to being able to accomplish a lot of great things within the community for the upcoming fiscal year, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Alright. I don't have any questions. Is there any public comment? Not seeing any. Commissioner Gilman, are you prepared to make a motion?
I, Commissioner Gilman, move to approve resolution number two-five dash seven-seven-three, granting University of Nevada Reno Story County Extension, a five oh one C three nonprofit, the sum not to exceed thirty-five thousand for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six, for the purpose of addressing contemporary issues in the area and agricultural, horticultural, community development, health and nutrition, personal and family development, and natural resources.
Alright, just wanted to make a correction. It was thirty-five thousand, five hundred. And I'll second that motion. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number thirty-two, discussion for possible action. Discussion and possible direction to county staff to research available data related to groundwater availability and conditions in the Virginia City Highlands, Highland Ranches, and the Virginia Ranches, and present findings and potential solutions ensuring long-term water sustainability in accordance with the Story County Master Plan and Water Resources Plan. Austin?
Alright, thank you. Austin Osborne for the record, county manager. Really, at this point, we've done a lot of research in the Highlands area for water availability and water quality. And that includes our, I think we're on the seventh year now of the USGS water study. The master plan has suggested these potential further analyses and potential actions in the future. We also have a water resources master plan now that we have completed in twenty-twenty-three. All of these things pointing to known issues in the Highlands area with regard to underground water resources. So, Commissioner Carmona and I discussed some of these matters in the past, and, you know, where do we want to go with these things? And I would like to ask at this point to get direction from the board, for our team, to follow the documents and the recommendations we have right now to look at our options and see what the next five, ten years might be for that community, whether importing water, developing infrastructure, curtailing growth, doing transfer development credits that's in the master plan, and other mechanisms to make sure that that community remains sustainable into the future. So, at this point, it's just a request to get direction, to look at all the data, start analyzing what's out there rather than just collecting it, and then coming back to this board at a later time, sometime probably this year, to with some ideas and some findings and suggestions. And then this board could take action at that time on what it feels would be most appropriate for that community. That's what I have at this point.
Alright, thank you, Austin. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments about this item?
I do not, thank you.
Alright, is there any public comment regarding this item? Not seeing any. Commissioner Gilman, are you prepared to make a motion?
I, Commissioner Gilman, motion to direct county staff to research available data related to groundwater availability and conditions in the Story County Highlands, Highland Ranches, and Virginia Ranches, and present findings and potential solutions ensuring long-term water sustainability in accordance with the Story County Master Plan and Water Resource Plan.
Alright, there's a motion. I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Austin. Moving right along to item number thirty-three. Discussion for possible action. Discussion and direction to county staff and lobbyists. Is this a joke? Still got this one. One more time, right before legislation's over.
Oh, yes.
Discussion and direction to county staff and lobbyists regarding SB sixty-nine, bills regarding regional impacts in Story Washoe Line, Douglas, and Carson, and cities, excuse me, SB seventy-eight, AB thirty-two, bills supported or opposed by the Nevada Association of Counties, bills proposed by the governor and legislative leadership since the last board meeting, and bills shown in the attached spreadsheet. County manager?
Alright, thank you. County manager, Austin Osborne for the record. Commissioner Carmona and myself and members of our team were down in the building last night until about one. The session ended at twelve o'clock and I think six seconds. So, at this point, in full honesty, there's some work that needs to be done to see what had occurred in the last three hours of the session, to go through that chart and see what passed, what did not pass, what became a zombie and attached to something else and other methods of bill passage and failure that happened last night. I can at this point tell you that SB sixty-nine, our bill, has made it through both houses, made it through concurrence, and is on the governor's desk hopefully for approval at this point. We're being told that that is an optimistic, you know, appearing situation. Senate Bill seventy-eight that we were concerned with regard to the Comstock Historic District did not make it through the session. So, that issue is mitigated. We have already reached out to DCNR and the state that we want to continue our conversations with potentially moving Historic District under different leadership over time. And then at this point, really, there's nothing else. At the next meeting, I think our entire team would have a full, comprehensive update on what happened last night as well as what the governor may have done by that time.
Alright. So, do you, you don't need any official direction for, from us at this point, right?
At this point, it's really learn and listen and...
Alright. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not.
Alright. I don't have any questions. I do just want to take this opportunity to thank everybody on the Story County staff that was participating in one way, shape, or form in legislative season. Obviously, county manager Osborne, our lobbying teams. We're very fortunate. We've got a few, a few folks on hand that really have looked out for Story County over this legislative season, as they do every legislative season. But, you know, Story County has, I think, shown that we are willing to go toe-to-toe with anybody that, you know, comes our way. And I know Commissioner Mitchell, who's not here today, spent a lot of time down there, a lot more time than I think a lot of elected officials do. But he made a lot of progress for us on our bill, and I just want to take the time to say thank you to everybody on staff, county manager, Commissioner Mitchell, Commissioner Gilman for his part. And definitely glad the legislative season is over. You know, I heard rumors there might be special session brewing, but we'll take the victory today that it was over last night at twelve o'clock in the morning. And that's really all I have. Is there any public comment?
I would ask most determined if any staff or elected officials have anything they'd like to add to this.
You heard him. Anybody? Nope. Staff, public comment? Fair enough. So, there's no motion on this one then?
At this point, I would say not.
Alright. Well, again, thank you, Austin, for that update.
You're welcome.
And we look forward to the recap next commission meeting. Alright. I'm sorry, Commissioner Gilman, did you have any questions?
I do not.
Alright. Moving on to item number thirty-four. This is discussion for possible action. Consideration of possible approval of business license, second readings A through L. Commissioner Gilman, do you have any questions or comments about those second readings?
I do not.
About public comment? Not seeing any. Commissioner Gilman, are you prepared to make a motion?
Um, yeah. I, Commissioner Gilman, move to approve final reading of A through L. No, yeah, A through L on today's agenda.
Alright, I will second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Onto item number thirty-five. This is the second and final time during this meeting that public comment will be welcomed. Is there any public comment in the courtroom today? Not seeing any. Brings us to item number thirty-six, which is adjournment of all active and recess boards on the agenda. It is eleven forty-nine. This meeting is adjourned. See you in a couple weeks. Who are we waiting for?